Madam Secretary, call the role.
Hello. Mr. Chair, with the presence of Honorable Sosy Jane Garcia making it seven, we are now in quorum.
Considering the majority of the members of this August body are present, the chair now declares quorum. May I request Honorable Turalba to be our meantime floor leader since the floor leader is not here. For the adoption of approval of the order of business, Mr. Flor?
Thank you. Good morning to our Presiding Officer, to our Sangguniyang Secretary, to the other members of this Sangguniyang Bayan and to our visitors for today's regular session. At this juncture, Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of the Order of Business for today's regular session.
This motion passed by Honorable Turalba. Any second? Seconded by Honorable Val. Any objection? Discussion? Amendments? Do you think that motion approved? For... Mr. Flor, do we have visitors for today?
We have couple of visitors for today's regular session, Mr. Chair. At this point, may I move for the suspension of the rules to accommodate our visitors.
Rule suspended.
First, Mr. Chair, we have our former colleague of this Sangguniyang Bayan in the person of the Honorable Val Inoferio. Sir Val?
Sir Val, you may have the floor now.
Thank you, Honorable Floor Leader. Good morning to our Presiding Officer, Honorable Sabion, to the members of this August body, to all the Honorebals Sangguniyang Bayan members, to our secretary, to our visitors especially, I don't know if the new Chief of Police is here. I guess because I heard that the new Chief of Police of the Municipality of EPL will be having a call this morning to all the members of this Sangguniyang Bayan and to all other visitors who are department heads, to the staff of this Sangguniyang Bayan. Good morning again. I am here this morning to respond or to comply to the invitation of the secretary. Yesterday, I received the invitation and according to the letter of the secretary, she was directed by the Honorable Vice Mayor to invite me purposely to appraise you or to update you, to inform you of the new guidelines relative to the benefits, privileges and rights of the senior citizen, senior citizens of the Municipality of EPL. I went to my office and scanned over the different documents that I received from the Office of the Part list of the senior citizen in the person of Honorable Ordannis. And after that, I consulted also my boss, the Municipal Social Welfare Operation Officer, Mam Sepe. I told her I receive an invitation, Mam, because the OSKA, being the head of the OSKA Office of the Senior Citizens Affairs, under me, so we are under the Office of the MSWD. So it is just proper for me to consult, to ask permission from my boss, Mam Sepe. And she told me that she also received also an invitation to attend this morning session with the same purpose also regarding the new guidelines on the privileges, rights and benefits of the senior citizen. So after I have, we have exchange of ideas and opinions, I told Mam Sepe, "Mam, it would be better, Mam, kung supplyan sa natu sila, Mam, o capis sa new guidelines, especially the Republic Act number 9994, otherwise known as the Senior Citizens Expanded Act of 2011, wherein makita dito ang tanang mga benefits, privileges and rights of the senior citizen." And when I reviewed all of this information from the Office of the House of Representatives, I mean of the Part list representative, dili kaiguo ang duha o tulukaw ras mag-orient about all these things. So I suggested to Mam Sepe, ipa-reproduce sa natu ni Mam and then give capis to all the members of this Sangguniyang Bayan, not only the members of this Sangguniyang Bayan, including all the barangay captains for their information about these new guidelines on the senior citizens' benefits. So I would suggest to the Honorable Presiding Officer, kung pwede, idiffer lang naman mo, for me, I don't know with Mam Sepe, no? The orientation on the benefits of the senior citizen, privileges kay taas kayo. Taas kayo, including the 20% deduction from the purchase of medicines, medical equipments and supply, including the 5%, 50% deduction of the electricity and water consumption, including the deduction of 5% from all selected agricultural commodities, market commodities that the senior citizen can avail. Appeal na dito ang kamote, balanghoy, tanan ang klase sa mga agricultural commodities. We have a list coming from the Office of the Part list representative. So it will take us, especially dunay mga clarifications, dunay mga interaction among the members of this Sangguniyang Bayan, it will take us about a day, half day or a day.
I would like to inform everyone that the instruction of the Vice Mayor is for the invitation of Mam Sepe and Sir Val because there are issues and concern that Mam Eleanor Sardual would like to raise. So it's better for us to wait for Mam Eleanor.
Okay. Sir, can we just wait for Mam Eleanor?
She is now coming. Hang on na siya, sir.
Mam Eleanor Sardual requested the Vice Mayor to invite me in order perhaps to clarify some fake news, malicious and fake news. I have a copy of the issuance of the DILG regarding the universal pension, which is still in the House of Representatives. It's not yet approved and I will give a copy of that. I think the secretary has reproduced copy of that. Please, kung pwede, i-distribute na sa ila para nila mabasa. And I have my office dito sa OSKA and I have announced this to the public, "Kung dun na may problema about senior citizen, you go to my office." You go to my office. So that magkawan-onwan na dito ang historia about your concern because I know there are some of the retired teachers, retired government employees, pensioners, JS, ISSS and other kinds of pensions. Ngaintresado kayo sila sa universal pension, pero dun na tayo balaon. I have there in the office, balaon dito. It's translated in our own dialect, Visayan dialect. Translated dito that the social pension is only intended as of now, the law, for indigent senior citizens. So I want these people also to have a copy of all these laws of the senior citizen. The new guidelines is translated into two versions, English and Tagalog. So kung ako naing ma-distribute and for those interested person, kung gusto mo basan ini, they go to my office and my office is very much willing to accommodate them. We will entertain them, no? Kung sa ilang gusto mo iclarify about social pension. We have there in the office capis of this. So this moment in time, I would like to inform this August body, ngang akong purpose karoon is just to inform you maybe, kung maka, if you can, if you have already this copy of the new guidelines, I think all the members of this Sangguniyang Bayan, maka sabut mapunt siguro sa balaon. No? It's in English, it's in Tagalog. Kung dun na may mga gusto iclarify, we have the Chairman of the Committee of Senior Citizen in the person of Honorable Ramos. So you can ask the Chairman to clarify things regarding the provisions embedded in our senior citizens' laws. I think that is all and thank you again for the invitation. I would like to inform, I would like to request the Honorable Vice Mayor, kung naasiya, kung dun na manggali mga tao, kung gusto nga may balubain sa balaon sa senior citizen, my office is open, open and anytime. Tuwa dito ang tanan nga, pwede nila nga, mga gusto may bauhan. Okay, I will also ask Honorable Sardual, mas maya dito sa akong opisina, kay magkawan-onwan mi ang historia bayan sa senior citizens' laws. Thank you and good morning.
So any query from this August body? Kung sae queries sa concern? So I think wala answer. Ama na lang siguro ng advice si Mam Eleanor na ikaw may mis, since na naiinom mo na patun sa office, siguro maabot si Mam Eleanor, ama na lang iinform na ma-ata na sa inyo office para sa iyong concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Sir Val. Maybe later part, Mam Elisa Dual will arrive.
Next visitor, Mr. Flor?
Next visitor, Mr. Chair, we have here our new Chief of Police of the EPL Municipal Police Station. We have here Police Major Sanijo Ampunin.
Okay. Sir, you may have the floor now.
Proceed lang po tayo sa rostrum, sir.
Excuse me, excuse me. Please, from the staff, please co-distribute sa katong paper nagidala ni Sir Val. You may have the floor now.
Sir, you may have the floor now. To the Honorable Presiding Officer, Honorable Vice Mayor Ramses Poligario, to the other members of the SP, other visitors, good morning. I am Police Major Sanijo Ampunin, a member of PNP class 2014 and I am designated as the new officer in charge of EPL Municipal Police Station since this last Saturday. And I am grateful for the opportunity for having me here in your session and I will only asking you for your support for the Municipal Police Station to make the EPL Municipality safer and stronger. Rest assured that the PNP with our unit, the EPL Municipal Police Station will do all our best to make this community safe and stronger as I've mentioned by our Honorable Mayor when we have met yesterday, to make the EPL safe and EPL stronger. And I also extending my gratitude for the support from the Mayor and hopefully, saan po, mapanatili natin 'yung EPL na ligtas sa mga illegal activities and criminal elements. And that's all po and thank you for having me here.
Okay. What's a pleasure. Any query? Turn your chief police. Yes, acknowledge the presence of Honorable Chong. Any query? So I think, wala. Sir, salamat sa magkakatursi natin. I appreciate naman and good luck sa trabaho na imong ma-assign karoon ngayon. Next visitor, Mr. Flor?
Mr. Chair, before the next visitor, may I move to relinquish this chair to our regular floor leader because he's already around, the Honorable Bab?
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Honorable Kapirig, you can release.
For consideration, I have queries sa ito ang officer in charge.
Okay, okay. Sir?
Sir, 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 can you please come back in the rostrum because one of our colleague, the Honorable Kapirig, have something to inquire from you.
Okay.
Good morning, sir.
Ma'am.
Major, major sir, no?
Yes, ma'am.
Same batch mo with?
2014, ma'am.
With Major Pugoy?
Yes, ma'am.
Query na ko, sir, since ang imuhang pagpahibalo, pag ano lang is pagila and then hear courtesy call with mayor, I just wanna know, as unsa-unsang imuhang matawag na to experience or imong background before can nahi mong ano, mahimong officer in charge ng resa sa EPL MPS?
Previously, ma'am, nung dumating ako dito sa Police Regional Office 9 from academy way back 2014, I've been assigned in Sambongga City Police Office. My first assignment was as a platoon leader of the Sambongga City Mobile Force Company and after two years, nalipat po ako sa Police Station as deputy then eventually naging COP po ng Sambongga City Police Station 2 and way back 2019, nalipat po ako ng Regional Office sa Intelligence Division and I've been in Intelligence Division for almost four years before coming here.
So basically, sir, your exposure is na sa Sambongga City lang? Karoon pa ka'd refer Sambongga City Pugay?
Hindi po.
Hindi po ako masyado maga- sa Tagalog.
Uh, so, all your exposures from Academy is in Sambongga City? So this is your first time here in Sambongga City Pugay?
Not really the first time, ma'am. First assignment ko po dito sa probinsya, but when I was in Regional Office, uh, technically po, buong region ay po 'yung sakop namin.
Ah, okay. So intel, ilang taon sa intel?
Almost four years, ma'am.
As Chief of Police sa Zone 2 of Sambongga City, ilang taon?
Uh, one year, ma'am.
One year, one plus four intel of COP one year, and another ano pa?
As Deputy, ma'am. Deputy COP for almost, kung susumahin natin, ma'am, uh, almost two years then.
So I believe you know the peace and order situation of EPL, since I think twice or thrice ni mo ge-emphasize na you would be a partner for making EPL safer and EPL stronger.
Yes, ma'am.
So can you be more specific sa, imong assessment sa EPL? Ang sa mga steps you want?
Sa ngayon, ma'am, uh, as per my observation for the last three days, safe naman 'yung EPL. Yung nga lang, ang kailangan po nating ayusin is 'yung maiwasan, especially sa kalsadas 'yung mga aksidente, 'yung mga away po sa mga gangs. Kasi, as far as I know, meron po tayong mga incident na nagkakaroon ng mga awayan. Although hindi lang siya normal na suntukan, meron pong saksakan pang nangyayari. So yun po 'yung mga ano, uh, dapat naming bantayan. Uh, generally, peaceful po 'yung area, safe naman po siya sa business, sa mga travelers. Pero yun po mga bagay na yun, na hindi naman natin kontrolado, or hindi naman natin mabantayan 24/7. At least po, yun 'yung mga tatanggalin natin para, uh, masabi natin, uh, hundred percent, uh, safe and protected po 'yung, uh, municipality of EPL.
Uh, sir, since, um, six years ago, or six years, sobra na 'yung parang campaign about the drugs, no? So as LIGA ng mga barangay president, as I know, six or seven barangays pa lang ang na-clear dire sa EPL. So, parang six or seven?
And may tatlo po tayong inaapplyan na for, nasa pideya na for their approval. And we will be recommending another three, I think, para sa drug clearing.
Kasi isa na siya sa mga factors sa pag-evaluate sa LGU EPL, nga we are the center, and then EPL safer, EPL stronger, but still, wala, nahurot ang 28 barangays, kasi moma na siya dapat atong iano, and yet basically, isa po na siya sa kumakoncern.
Uh, dun kasi, ma'am, sa drug clearing na yun, ma'am, ang isa sa naging problema natin sa mga barangay, kasi meron po tayong, uh, watch list. So dun sa listahan na yun, kapag kom, pagka meron pa pong isa, pangalan na naiwan diyan sa barangay nyan, although wala na nangyayaring bentaan, wala na gumagamit, as long as meron may naiwan pa ring isa sa, isang personality na nakalista dun, hindi po magagrant 'yung, uh, pagpa-apply natin ang barangay drug clearing. Ang kailangan po natin is matanggal sa listahan 'yung tao na yun, either by adjudication, or kailangan po't makapagtayo tayo ng, uh, balay silangan para mag-undergo sila ng balay silangan. Isa po 'yung sa, uh, requirements. Kaya po medyo nahihirapan tayo magpa-clear na maraming barangay. Yan din po 'yung nagiging problema ng other provinces. Kaya po hindi po rin sila makapagpa-clear.
So nabrief na kayo, sir, I assume about sa progress ng location ng bahay silangan natin?
Yes, ma'am, 'yung beside dun sa station?
Old municipal, oo, sa likod 'yung parang barracks dati. Sir, uh, medyo rampant na din, diba? Hindi dito sa EPL, but outside the municipality of Sambongga City Pugay. So I believe, uh, I assume, no, dapat mapadayon giapon saron sa ato ang mga lakhang, ang mga buhaton, for the illegal or smuggling of cigarettes?
Uh, pardon, ma'am?
Exactly. Uh, 'yung problem about the smuggling of cigarettes?
Uh, dun po sa smuggling of cigarettes. So ngayon po, although I have the initial information, pero you're considering po na three days pa lang ako nag-assume, and I will setting up para po ma-pigilan o mahuli 'yung mga, uh, smuggling.
Sige, sir. Anyway, I'm a MAG member, so I believe I would, ano na lang, uupo ako or attend ako ng meeting with you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair?
Honorable Ta Rawa, you're recognized.
Uh, for consideration, with the, with this, uh, privilege?
Yes. We have before that, I would like to talk?
Since we have our Chief of Police today in this regular session, this is a, uh, uh, a role of the, of the, uh, PNP to protect, to safeguard the lives and property of our constituents in this municipality. So at this juncture, Mr. Chair, one of our visitor, being an individual inhabitant of this municipality, has some inquiry to our newly installed Chief of Police in the person of the former Sanggunyang Bayan of this municipality, uh, a dignified, respected individual in this municipality, the former Sanggunyang Bayan, the Honorable Eleanor Sadual.
Ma'am, you're recognized.
Okay, thank you very much for the, this question from this corner, while, uh, our good, uh, laugh is here. I'm just a little curious about your report. If you were to gauge the educational process of our teenagers, what would be the most hard game, the most vulnerable section of our community would be the younger generation? Would you agree to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, you mentioned, or the idea might be, uh, I'm sorry, right? Uh, is there a continuing education for young line up or younger line up with the schools to continually, uh, uh, provide the, 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 the needed information for the younger generation? So that they're aware of the terrible tragedy we put in full their lives? If they enter in groups such or discuss in groups such, you know, how it is of the nature, so that's what I would be asking. So I wonder whether you also, um, you also have a program that would bring in the parents and families? Uh, and I believe that family is a primary factor to really instigate school, especially if the kids are still young. I would do, I would have specific rules for my children if I had teenage children. So I wonder, sir, kung naabri ba po na sa inyo program? I, I think that I, I, I see now, I see that we have a lot of information, especially reaching each home and each nation. Thank you very much, sir.
Uh, ma'am, sa ngayon, uh, considering po, gaya po na I have mentioned earlier, na three days ko pa, three days pa lang po ako nakapag-assume, pero may idea namang po ako sa ano na yun, kasi previously, uh, during my time as COP at Sambongga City Police Station 2, ginawa ko po napuntahan lahat ng eskwelahan. Kausapin sila, 'yung mga teachers, ano 'yung concerns sila, ano 'yung manakikita nilang problema, ano 'yung kailangan nila. Kahit 'yung mga pinakaliliblib po na eskwelahan, kahit 'yung nilalakad lang, uh, hindi po ma-access ng mga sasakyan, pinuntahan ko po yun. Isa po yun sa, uh, ginawa ko. Kasi naniniwala po ako na 'yung disiplina ng tao, kasama na rin yun sa pinag-aaralan ng eskwelahan. And isa po yun sa mga tinuturo ng teachers. Pero dapat din po sa natandaan ng mga magulang, being the magulang, it's their first responsibility na i-guide 'yung mga anak nila. Kasi hindi po po kinapunta sila sa eskwelahan, pawabayaan na nila. It's their own responsibility to look out for their children.
Thank you, sir, and, um, I pray that the, you know, the, if, if, if I'm not mistaken, most schools have the PTAs, parents, teachers. So maybe through that particular gathering, that could be, uh, you could introduce that as I, as one of the important topics to be taken up by the, by, by those who attend the PTA. I mean, it's better to safeguard, you know, ang, ang kaniyang atong mga bata, kay kabalamag yung kong, ang mga bata karoon from third, fourth, um, fourth, fifth grades. I look at them now, they're not as innocent as we were before during my time. Ingusentikay ang mga bata, karoon, wala na. You see them and their, I, I hear children of, of grade schools walking across our streets, and sometimes I hear the conversations, ako ang kuyawan sa ilang mga historya. Oh, ang ilang mga, whether it's comedia ba, but even if it's comedia, it can lead to dangerous, as you say, ba, sir, uh, drugs. So thank you very much sa imong pag, paglantaw nini, and we, as a citizen now, I welcome you to our community. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any query?
And last, Honorable Chair?
Honorable Chong?
I just wish to ask our new signed Chief of Police here, in your experience as Chief of Police, so my, how, in your own opinion, how could, how could the Sanggunyang Bayan assist or help you in order for you to maintain the peace and order of EPL nicely?
Uh, in my own opinion, sir, um, unang-una na pwedeng ma-itulong ng Sanggunyang Bayan sa amin is 'yung pagpapatupad po natin o paggawa po natin ng mga ordinances na kusaan based on our observation, na kailangan po nating baguhin, kailangan po nating ipatupad para mas maging maayos po 'yung, uh, lugar natin. For example, po, kung mapansin po natin, nagkaroon tayo ng bagong daanan, and ang post po namin dun sa checkpoint, sa boundaries, is parang hindi na po siya strategically nakalagay dun. So kung pwede, although pwede, pwede po nating ilipat yun, o kaya pwede po nating dagdagan with, with the help na rin po ng Sanggunyang Bayan, with their approval.
So nicely said. With that, I'll be expecting your recommendation.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And, any query? Um, I think wala na, and sir, um, good, um, welcome sa EPL, and hope na, and good luck, and hope na mapanatili ang peace and order dire. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next visitor, Mr. Flor? Um, next visitor, Mr. Flor?
Honorable Chair?
I may acknowledge, um, Mam Elinar, the, um, former member of this August body, uh, to raise your concern. Ma'am, you may have the floor now? Yes, okay.
Um, thank you so much for accommodating senior citizen. Um, but I'm glad I met the Social Welfare, uh, Officer this morning, and apparently, uh, apparently the news that my concern, which I brought before the Sanggunyang Bayan is a little too hasty perhaps, because there is a current, there is a recent notice that the office has received. But anyway, for what it's worth, um, as a senior citizen, as I, as I reach the age of 80, when I read about this, and I'm still alive and kicking at 80, this is wonderful news, that at 80, we're entitled to some remuneration or some, some gift, no, Bob? Papamatingalik ka ni Abutog 80, Bob? May po nang imong hinapay rin, ha? But anyway, but anyway, um, Mr. Chair, thank you so much. And I hope that, um, I don't mean to, I don't mean to pry into the workings of the DSWD, but when the event comes, when the timing comes to reach our LGU, because my question was, here is this, uh, notice from the to share to me, from the House of Representatives, nung bag yun, ang, ang ilang balao, nga the, this particular law of implementing a 25,000 peso to those who reach 80. And I became 80 last April 1, so ikaw, eh, kalambi mani ini? Kay may kunin ako ipalitog something different to akong i-save up ni. And never mind the 100, kadi will receive po sa to, that a bigger amount, ikaw, never mind, oh, di pa kumuabot yah, but if I'm entitled to at 80. So anyway, this is one reason, this is the reason why I brought it here. But apparently, there is a new notice coming from DSWD, and I believe, Mr. Chair, that it would be more appropriate for the head of the DSWD to share what she also received officially from the Social Welfare Administrator. So anyway, that was just my concern. But ako lang paabutin ninyo, DSWD, kung abut na ginapanahon, ay ang kalimtein tao ni mga senior citizens, no? Kay musulong yung ko dito ninyo, kay may na lang ng naaygamay madawad na mo. So that's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for the accommodation.
Thank you. Uh, any, what's a pleasure of the body?
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Okay, um, ma'am, you may have the floor now? Ma'am?
Mam Sepe.
Mam Sepe?
So, good morning. Thank you very much for, um, the invitation. Actually, I've prepared here the memo received dated March 23 from the DILG. And, um, actually, yesterday, we had a meeting with Sir Val regarding the orientation, um, that the August body wants us to orient pertaining to the senior citizens', um, law, the guidelines, the new guidelines. But so far, Mam Elly, um, wala pa pong, um, bagong law when it comes to the, um, 25,000 that our, um, 80 years old and up to 90 that they can receive. Um, but this was my proposal, if you could still remember way back, um, last year, that my proposal was to provide, um, one-time assistance in the amount of 10,000 to the, our senior citizen, but it's localized. So I have here the data, um, 80 to 90 years old, which is a total of 44 senior citizens from different, um, barangays. So, but when I checked the budget, because, um, Sambongga City has already implemented this, so they provided cash assistance to the senior citizens who reach 80. So it's one-time assistance, and when they also reach 90 to, to 99, they can receive another, um, 20,000. So I want to replicate that, um, initiative of the LGU or the city government of EPL, uh, city government of Sambongga City, but with the limited resources that we have. So I think, um, our allocation, our budget is not yet, um, enough. But then, I and Sir Val really, um, plan to push this, um, initiative or to replicate the initiative of Sambongga City, so that our senior citizen also aged 85 and above could receive the same. So I think, um, sa, sa ngayon, we are still, um, on the process of, um, proposing to the Sanggunyang Bayan if, um, they will agree on our proposal for the, um, cash assistance to be given to our senior citizens ages 85 to 85. Ang aming napag-usapan ni Sir Val, considering that, uh, considering the number of senior citizens based on our data na 84, I think our budget would not be enough. Kasi, we need, um, a lot or a big amount here to be given to our senior citizens. So yun po ang aming ano, so far, wala pa po for, for EPL, no? So the 80 ano, but we have the law, which is centenarian law, um, na our eight, 100, um, senior citizens can receive the amount of 100,000. So meron na tayong tatlong, um, senior citizens who received last year, dalawa, and for this year, meron tayong dalawa na nasubmit na sa region for the processing of the 100,000 cash assistance. But it's a national budget, under national budget siya. For our, ano, ang initiative lang natin dito sa EPL is, we provided, um, ano, during the, the, ano, the, 'yung pagbigay ng, ng cash assistance, which is 100,000. Ang ginawa lang natin, we, ano, we give, um, cake lang. Parang congratulations cake to our 100 centenarian. But then, for, actually, there was, uh, an ordinance that our, our senior citizens, especially the birthday celebrator, can receive cake, pero hindi pa push yun na push through, no? So isa yun sa ordinance sa na, I think authored by, um, isang SB, uh, Sir Ian.
Uh, may tinapaw na tong last?
Last year, that was last year, oo. I received the, ano, copy of the ordinance. But then, when we checked the, the budget, 1,006, uh, 1,000? ah, 1,000, 1.6 million, ang, ang, we need to allocate 1.6 million kasi I believe all of our senior citizens, kailangan makareceive since we have here, um, 5,404 registered members as of today, no? So napakalaking halaga po yun.
Yes, yes, Ma'am Elina.
5,000? You're still able to vote?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. 5,000.
I would, I would, let's, let me go back. Very good mention, that's good thing. And I would, I, I think I would call for my fellow senior citizens like that.
Maybe what we could do is instead of considering the higher amount, maybe it could be lessened so that more of the senior citizens would be able to receive, yeah. Maybe you could consider that and study that and find out whether it would be more appropriate for our budget. And I would consider, and I would also urge the Sangguniang Bayan to seriously look into the senior citizens bit now. I mean, I know we consider them as somebody, you know, people that have, that perhaps should be forgotten, but they're not because they've contributed a lot to the building of this community. And if you look into the lives of the senior citizens, I think that they have, uh, they have done a lot to build Epeel to become what it is now. And so, uh, thank you very much, madam, for your concern and my, my suggestion would be instead of attaining, instead of trying to, to, to budget for a higher amount for each senior citizen, how about considering lowering it down so that more would be gratified? So thank you very much for your concern and thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of this body, for taking the time to listen to a senior citizen that once passed this hall, so the Sangguniang Bayan. So salamat. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, thank you very much.
Honorable Chair?
Yes, Mr. Flor.
I hope that the matter being discussed by, I move, I rather move that the matter being discussed by our visitor here from MSWD, Judilin CPB be referred to the Committee on Senior Citizens.
This matter will be referred on Committee on Senior Citizens. Next visitor, Mr. Flor.
Next visitor here, Honorable Chair, we have, he's in person of Angel Tayag from PLDT.
Sir, you may have the floor now.
It's Angel Tayag, yeah. You take the first room.
Uh, good morning, uh, good morning, everyone. Sir Chair, regarding po sa concern po dun sa mga facilities po natin, sa, lalong-lalo na po dun sa harap ng G3, 'yung post po natin dun is, which is, nakaano na po tayo ng, ano, ng request for relocation. Then the company sent me here for more questions regarding with that matter. Also, sa harap ng LBC.
Check mic. Mr. Chair, may have the floor?
Yes, Honorable Turalba, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Tayag, thank you very much for your presence today for responding to our requests regarding the post fronting the G3. Kaya, it's been a while that we've been asking PLDT to remove that post, to relocate that post. Kaya, andami talagang, uh, accidente, especially during nighttime kasi dim 'yung mga ilaw dyan eh. Uh, pag wala na 'yung barbecue, 'yung mga businesses during nighttime, madilima talaga dyan. So yun ang request ng local government unit, not only Sangguniang Bayan, but the local government unit as entity. Kaya, uh, kasi gusto natin na ma-clear talaga 'yang area na yan. So, kailan po, kailan po 'yung relocation ng post na yan?
Actually, ma'am, uh, I have already sent it to office eight times, which is karoon, ma'am, nagaano na siya, uh, medyo init na kasi siya dito sa office, so ilaha kong isendry. For more questions, more actions, i-relay na ilaha, ma'am, as soon as possible.
That's the only, the very only thing that we want, that the post be relocated.
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible. Yun lang po. Kasi if, we will write and send a letter to, uh, PLDT, it takes some time before they will answer, before they will respond to our request. So timely, andito po 'yung office niyo, so sana po matugunan 'yung request ng Sangguniang Bayan.
I will do my part, ma'am, to forward this concern.
Thank you, thank you.
As soon as possible.
Thank you. Um, any more query? I think wala na, um, sir. Thank you. Next visitor, Mr. Flor.
We have another visitor here, Honorable Chair, in person of Denise Bayhon.
Okay, ma'am, you may have the floor now.
From Metoda.
Privilege motion, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Turalba.
Aside from a privilege motion, a point of order, his, uh, letter of petition is already included in the Order of Business for today's regular session.
Uh, sir, uh, just wait for the Order of Business for today. Um, next visitor, Mr. Flor.
So, shall we proceed?
DILG, DILG.
Okay. Ma'am. Ah, okay. Hi, okay, ma'am. Um, Ma'am Gemma, sandun, um, you may have the floor now for your concern.
Okay, the Honorable Presiding Officer, the Honorable August Body, good morning. Morning, everybody. Uh, last, ano's ano na receive? I receive a letter from our, um, Ma'am Estelita Iggyano from our SB secretary, uh, for my appearance here regarding the memorandum order number 35 series of 2022 of the NCIP, no, signed by NCIP Alan Kapunan regarding the suspension of the conduct of the IPMR selection process. So, uh, with that, I have you here a copy of the Sid memorandum circular, uh, knowing that most of our issues as far as the office of the DILG is concerned is the termination of the, the position of our, uh, IPMR representation at the barangay level. Uh, but, uh, kanina, I approached, uh, Honorable Bual asking him when siya mag-terminate 'yang term, so it will be on July, no, July of this year. However, with this... Unsa issue, ani. I do not know what is the issue, uh, relative to this, uh, to this, uh, memorandum order from the NCIP. What is the issue? Because as far as the barangay is concerned, nag, uh, for the information of the August body also, uh, the Regional Director, Maminyaw, ordered, na siya magipanghatag nga money naglibog po ni usahay, uh, order or letter to the respective, uh, uh, members of the IPs at the barangay, uh, level, ano, uh, providing for, for the expiration of their term. Na siya ipanghatag na niya. However, uh, based on this, uh, memorandum order, no, based on this memorandum order, some of the barangays submitted a resolution requesting for a holdover. Uh, with that also, uh, Maminyaw, some of the barangays also were given the certificate of a holdover for a maximum of three months, no? So, uh, based on this memorandum circular at the barangay level, no? So, na siya ipanghatag, nga mo terminate imong term until this February only. Ako na lang bisaya yun para maklaro. Now, maotun na natigaw ang mga barangay, the DILG will all, maghatag lang mi guidance sa mga IPs representative at the barangay level as well as the municipal level. But then the, the one who has the final say as far as IPs and their representation is concerned to the respective legislative bodies is the NCIP yun. It is always the NCIP because they are, uh, a commission, commission na gyan sila, no, based on the EPRA law. Now, with this, dili, dili na to umaquestion that is why yesterday I called up our legal officers sa region with regards to this and then we cannot question, ma'am, uh, ang ato ah lang is we cannot question na whenever Maminyaw signed for a holdover for, uh, the maximum of three months. After the three months is, wala na yun siya because three months is the maximum. Although maogyo 'yang ginapanghatag sa barangay, three months of maximum. After that, automatically, uh, the, the position, no, ang iyang position is already terminated yun, no negotiation terminated. If they have selected or not, oh, wala sila na nakasillet, there is a vacuum in their representation. Good if, uh, they selected. Uh, based on the, their, we are asked, na nga'y ako ni Sir Bual, pero wala siya icopy, on their national, national guidelines of 2021, based manggo dito, they are directed to, uh, select for their new representative six, six months prior to that term, uh, expiration of their term supposedly. So in the event nga wala na siya nahimo, so automatically, ma terminate yun ang ilahang, uh, uh, ma expire yun ang ilahang position. So with this, naglibog ko, unsa issue karoon with regards to this, uh, memorandum order series of 1995. Now, later today, naghistoriamin nil Ma'am Lalay, it is because of, of the resolution, no, addressed to the provincial NCIP officer, uh, suspending, karoon na riponin ako, nakita, no, suspending, uh, the following, uh, Panglima, Panglima, no, Panglima, Madsmar Ahmad, United Muhammad, Rashid Ipal and Alfaheed Muhammad. So, we cannot question the resolution signed by the majority of the Council of Elders because based on the EPRA law, they have their own customary laws, no, and traditions nga gisunod. And as far as this resolution is concerned, ang akong lantaw, ani, mga honorable, is that it is not connected with this, uh, with this, uh, memorandum order number 35, but then it is in, relative to the provisions of the EPRA law. Because the EPRA law has provided for, need to pod is when and how a member of the Council of Elders be suspended and terminated. Wala lang yun ko icopy sa EPRA law, but it is there. It is not only relative to this, to this, uh, to this, uh, memorandum order numbers 35, which our, sa SB secretary, uh, pointed in his, in her letter, no? Because memorandum order number 35, uh, talk with regards to the suspension on the selection, on the selection of the, uh, of the IP's representation at the respective legislative body. So...
Okay, um, um...
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair?
Yes, okay.
Uh, may mo for a five minutes recess.
Okay, five minutes recess.
...
I'm Dr. Order. Um, I'd like to present for Honorable Mayor, Honorable Anna Melo Legario. I think, um, may I conference the mayor? Okay, Mayor, you may have the floor.
Di piliko niya sa basketball gabi. Nakachambarko na sila. Anyway, good morning. Yes, I'm here to present to you from the Southwestern University. Ma'am, sir? Uh, I hope nakaremember mo nga nag sponsor tayong isa ka doctor di ba? From Southwestern, from Bangkit Ruhan. And maraparin ti siguro tunim mo. Oo, then human nakapasal pa yun. And now they're here to present more, um, courses and...
Thank you. Any question? Honorable Katalon niya? Any other question? Any other question? Um, any other question from this office body?
Usually they like to maintain grades and then, um, belonging to the minimum and all that.
Um, the LGU can, can, can do that ma'am. But on our end, we can accept lang. But if, if you need to have those requirements on your end, you can do that. Because there will be a separate contract between LGU and the student. There will be a separate arrangement depending on what you like, um, between the LGU and the student. On, but on our end, uh, we can accept.
So walang requirement sa grade? Uh, as long as he...
As long as they pass, uh, in our ano lang, retention policy, ah.
Any question? Um, can you ask sa copy sa MOA na lang?
Yes, honorable. Yes, can we send the soft copy?
Yes.
Ah, yes, we can, we can send. We have arranged a sample MOA. And then just in case you're interested, you can send it back to us or you can inform us.
Um. Okay, tabak? Okay. Yeah, no, yeah. Um. Like six. Um, so staff, please, tabak um, si Konstantin na lang ata na ko. Like excuse, pas, Konstantin. Si Konstantin. Si Susi, nag excuse sa man. Huh? Okay, um, back to order. Mr. Flora for the privilege hour. Oh. Um, Mr. Flora, uh, do we have a visitors for today? Um, any? Yes, um, back order, um, Mr. Flora, for any visitors?
Privilege hour. We are now in privilege hour.
I'm, I think, Mr. Flora, um, you still have a visitor for today, um, ma'am Nima, uh, please, you may have the floor now for your concern. I'm, I think Mister Flor, um, you still have a visitor for today, um, Mam Nymfa, uh, please, you may have the floor na for your concern.
Yes, Honorable Toral, may I recognize?
Hey, before Mam Nymfa will, uh, proceed, I move for the suspension of the rules.
Rule suspended.
To this August body, uh, I am here to make a follow-up before this honorable body regarding our request for the passage of an ordinance adapting the LPT RP. In a sense that it is one of the requirements in the assessment of seal of good local governance. So, I think it is still with this body to act on our request.
So, what's the pleasure of the body? Pardon mo sa request.
An- an ordinance adapting the local public transport and route plan.
Okay. Um, just, um, as the committee of, uh, chairs, uh, transportation, ma'am, um, siguro just give me time, maybe next week?
Okay, sir.
Next week, um, um, maybe, um, ako sang i- ipasaptun ang uman for tricycle drivers.
Ah, sige sir.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you ma'am.
Yes, Honorable Ramos, you are recognized.
Allah.
Pardon, sir? Um, dugay na ni sa kuwan, liliba akong committee chair sa transportation sa panahon panini kuwan.
Largo.
Uh, honorable Largo.
The chairman of the committee on transportation call for a committee meeting. Para ma- ma- ma-resolve na lang issue.
Um, maybe next week.
And issue mga ganyan eh. Kay, with the approval of the road.
Road plan.
Daghan driver maapektuhan, maapektuhan ang atong local tricycle operator o ang bagay.
Okay. Sa.
So, kinalingkuran din siya.
But anyway, um, um. We, kuwan, we, kapaluman mina deadline na this June 6, right?
June 6, oo.
Um, so just give us time up, um, kuwan, um, di so mag-ponin na issue na itakal na, oh, di so mapunin na issue, good pod na kuwan, just give us time na lang.
Sige sir, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that considered as a urgent, urgent matter? Kaya kung urgent na, we can.
Yes, sir, it is an urgent kasi ang assessment will be done by June 6 of this year. And it will affect our performance.
So, pwede na siguro magka-call tag committee meeting by Monday.
By Monday.
Then pagkamerkulay.
Ordinance.
Hey, Mister Chair, may I have the floor?
Yes, Honorable Toral ba, you are recognized.
That's an ordinance, not a mere resolution, so it needs three readings. So, today is May 24, then it will, we will only have two weeks to go.
Okay. This is forty minutes.
It, that will be considered.
Sa, ayun ang concern na. Um, I think we don't have a visitors for today, Mister Flor, um, maybe we proceed to privilege hour? So, Mister Flor, uh, we proceed to the privilege hour. Um, Mister Flor, uh, for the privilege hour, anyone would like to avail the privilege hour?
Honorable Chair. I think we are now on privilege. Anybody from this honorable chamber who wishes to avail of their privilege, please raise your hand. Or let's say, let's begin from Honorable Ramos, any privilege? Honorable Bual, any privilege? Honorable Catalunya, Honorable Drolba, privilege?
No privilege speech at this moment, Mister Chair.
Honorable Capery. So. The president?
Um, yes, I have, uh, may I introduce the chair to Honorable Ramos to avail the privilege hour?
Hello, hello. Um, good morning, my dear colleagues, our secretary at Mam Lalay and expecting staff. Uh, my concern is about the road plan, um, for off jeepness, uh, local public transport road plan as proposed by LTF RP. Regional office that would practically encroach some of the flying routes. Um, in further effect their daily income while I would agree on the intention of LPT RP. That may, that may help us to become the recipient of seal of good governance, but I cannot allow in conscience that to look the welfare of the greater mass of those affected families of tricycle drivers and operators, remember, they consist a bigger pie of the sector affected on this road plan should this be approved and implemented. We just recently approved about five hundred franchise, more supposedly, for those without franchise. So what they can operate legally and that alone would result a substantial reduction of an income to our tricycle drivers, imagine four thousand families will be affected on this road plan and in my view, Mister, and in, um, in view of this, I would personally inhibit myself to actively pertaining to this road plan, uh, at the disadvantage of tricycle drivers and for the record, I am not willing to sponsor an ordinance on this regard, thank you.
Thank you, so there is a motion to, uh, inhibit. Acting President of President will inhibit. Inhibit with sponsor and ordinance, so is there any remarks? Oh, was there? Sige. Oh, privilege speech.
There is a motion na siya. Oh, there is a motion na siya. Okay.
So, the, the, the privilege poipets, dili dili inay namu, motion na siya, kay privilege piet maga. Pero I, I heard it. May request, uh, the secretary. I, atong pablu nga.
Hala, Honorable Chair, hala, hala, Honorable Chair. Hala, Honorable Chair.
Thank you, sir, acting president, thank you.
Um.
Honorable Chair. I move to dispense the reading of the previous session, minutes of the previous session.
There is a motion passed by Honorable Chong, any second? Seconded by Honorable Asim, any discussion? Amendments?
Hello.
Objection? Tribune and motion approved.
Honorable Chair, I move for the approval of the previous minutes, of previous session.
There is a motion passed by Honorable Chong, any second? Seconded by Honorable Bual, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? Tribune and motion approved.
Back to secretary.
Madam Secretary for.
Okay, for the reference of Mrs. Calendar on first reading, under the proposed ordinance, we have two. The first is the draft ordinance number one twenty, sponsored by Honorable Rashid Bual. An ordinance declaring the entire vicinity area where the ajung rock formation is situated as a sacred place to the indigenous people and making it a tangible landmark of the ancestral domain forever.
Honorable Chair.
Yes.
I move that this draft ordinance number one twenty be referred to the Committee on Ordinances and Rules.
This matter will be referred to the ordinance, ordinances and rules.
Item E does two, we have here draft ordinance number one twenty one, again sponsored by Honorable Rashid Bual. An ordinance institutionalizing the school of living traditions of the indigenous people in the municipal of Ipil.
Honorable Chair, I move the draft ordinance number one two one, be referred to the Committee on Ordinances and Rules.
This matter will be referred to ordinances and rules.
Under the communications item, under item E does one, we have here the SK supplemental budget number one for CY twenty twenty-three of Barangay Kaparan.
Honorable Chair, I move that this be referred to the Committee on Appropriation.
This matter will be referred in Committee on Appropriation.
Item E does two, Julie Endors from the municipal mayor, copy of the specific implementation agreement between the DSWD and LG Ipil for the implementation of the sustainable livelihood program.
So, what's the pleasure of the body? So, what's the pleasure of the body?
Mister Chair, may I have the floor?
Honorable Toral ba, you are recognized.
Let this matter be referred to the Committee on Social Services.
This matter will be referred in social services.
Item E does one, we have here the petition letter from bona fide members of the Ipil Tricycle Drivers and Operators Association or Itdoa against incumbent president on the alleged abuse of power and authority.
So, what's the pleasure of the body?
Honorable Chair.
Um, yes, Honorable, Mister Flor?
I move that this matter be referred to the Committee on Transportation.
For consideration, Mister Chair.
Yes, Honorable Toral ba.
Auntie. Complaint is present.
Okay.
Let's hear her agony, the clamor, the sentiments against the president of the Itdoa.
Okay.
May I move, Mister Chair, for the suspension of the rules?
Rule suspended, uh, before we refer this to the Committee on Transportation, um.
The complaint is.
Maybe hear your complaint.
Is recognized, please occupy the room.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair, uh, the members of the Sanggonyang Bayan Visitors. Uh, I have here the proposal to to bring this complaint from out of, uh, I have here the signature campaign from the drivers of the Itdoa complaining about the administration of the former, uh, the incumbent president, uh, Mister Arnold Sibilia. Although I have received from, uh, previous, previous week that there was a certain Richard Ampel reported, uh, also complaint for, uh, other, uh, association. Uh, except my, uh, association, uh, was not mentioned, uh. So, I am here bringing this, uh, series of complaints from the different, uh, bona fide members of Itdoa. Uh, I am the president of the Mithuda and the same time, the Ipil Tricycle Operators and Driver Services Cooperative. All, uh, was, uh, accredited from the kuwan, PLGO and the MLGO. So, we are legit, that's why the, the members of the Itdoa, uh, represent, uh, I am representing them for this complaint. So, Mister Chair, uh, I will not, uh, anymore read this, uh, the content, uh, unless there, there, there someone will, uh, want to hear the content of this, uh, it will, uh, consume, siguro, trepidation, trepidation. Then, uh, I will, uh, I will go over the kuwan, the, uh, the recommendation.
Mister Chair, before.
Yes, Honorable Toral ba.
Our visitor will read the recommendations on their complaint. Sir, ang sa'yo sinugdanan, ka'ng, nag, oh, ka'ng katong naagin, uh, Wednesday na ilain ni Anhidiri. Kahit tungod sa mga fees nga ginacharge diha sa matag parking, ano pa kung nasadapit nga mga, ka'ng ilang, ilang punduhanan sa mga, sa mga tricycle. Then, uh, taga ikaw may brief, brief view sa kaning inyong complaint, unsa'yo, unsa'yo ang inyong, uh, unsa'yo sinugdanan, kung sa inyo gusto may tabo.
Uh, Mister Chair, uh, about sa reklamo ni Richard Ampel before, uh, ipangista niya ang mga name of Tuda. Here in Ipil nga, every time nga magparking siya, uh, ginasingil siya o parking fee. So, ang, ang Mithuda, uh, wala niya maapil. Kahit tungod nga, nakatoto siya sa muwa sa Mithuda, wala na ni tabo sa muwa. Kahit sa akong, sa akong administration, sa akong, uh, pagmanis na ko sa Tuda, sa may Jiris, Kirino Street. Wala ko gapaningil, maski piso sa mga kuwan, sa mga drivers. Kung mopila, wala ko gugan, abog sa mga driver, wala ko gabog, tanan open kayo, maula na ang Mithuda, ang na-experience na mga driver nga wala kapang abog, delete member. Ang jis piso's nga ka'ng gina-bayad na mo, diha sa Kirino Street sa among Tuda, is para nasasatispa Chair, kung naami dispatchers, mo dispatcha muwa. Uh, utmatikale, kabubuto na munakbontari na munang hiatag sa among driver, nga katong nakad-off, wala sa income, so ginatagahan na munas siya.
Bale sir, ma'to ang kay Ampel no? Ampel nga complain, diha sa inyong bahin, unsa'po't ang inyong kuwan, against Mister Arnold Sibilia.
So, para ang, ang samuha sa Mithuda, wala, wala reklamo sa among Mithuda, sa among association. So, para wala, uh, sa kidala ni Mister Richard Ampel, uh, last week, wala ang amo ang Tuda, giapil niya sa reklamo.
In enactment of SB resolution. The Committee on Tourism which was referred the above mentioned subject has considered the same and has the honor to report it back to the August body with the recommendations. The committee after conducting a meeting with the Municipality Tourism after designated Mr. JB Inofeario Junior regarding the five identified cultural inventory namely Agung Kulintangan, Claywater Jar or Tabo, uh Ginama Brass Bowl or Lota, Beetle Nutbox or Gutuan. Find the same in other and retorious hence recommend for approval. Further, the committee strongly recommend that it be endorsed to the National Commission on Culture and the Arts NCAA. Either either move for the adoption of the said committee report, Mr. Chair.
Um there's a motion passed by Honorable Asim, any second? Seconded by Honorable Boal, any discussion? Amendments, objections, there being non-motion approved.
I move for suspension of the rules.
To suspend it.
I move for the approval of the resolution approving the five identified cultural inventory and further endorse the same to the National Commission on Culture and the Art NCAA. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um there's a motion passed by Honorable Asim.
Any second?
Seconded by Honorable Chong, any discussion? Amendments, objections, there being non-motion approved.
Next. Still on committee report, anybody? Honorable Kapirig, let me floor.
Thank you, I have three committee report on appropriation and another three for housing and land utilization. So committee report number one three nine, the subject is all about the Barangay annual budget 2023 of Barangay Don Andres, eight million five hundred five seven thirty point fifty four. Barangay Timalang, that's four million forty two thousand seven hundred eight point ninety. Barangay Magdoop, six million nine hundred sixty seven thousand eight hundred sixteen. And Barangay Lumbya, two million three hundred sixty eight thousand and five hundred sixty and seventy cents. The committee hereby recommends for its approval, uh would like to pass a respa. I move for the adoption of committee report number one three nine.
Um there's a motion passed by Honorable Kapirig, seconded by Honorable Boal, any discussion? Amendments, objection, there being non-motion approved.
Like to pass a resolution declaring operative in its entirety the Barangay annual budget 2023 of Don Andres, Timalang, Magdaop, and Barangay Lumbya.
Second, Honorable Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Kapirig, seconded by Honorable Boal, any dis- oh Honorable Chong, any discussion? Amendments, objection, there being non-motion approved.
Committee report number one four zero. Uh annual budget of the Sanguniang Kabataan of Barangay Kaparan, three hundred seven thousand four pesos and thirty cents. Barangay Tumitong, two hundred sixty three thousand nine hundred seventy seven and eighty cents. And Barangay Ipil Heights, six hundred twenty five thousand one hundred sixty five and thirty cents. The committee on appropriation hereby recommends for its approval. Therefore, move for the adoption of committee report number one four zero.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Kapirig, any second? Any second? Seconded by Honorable Masin. Um any discussion? Amendments, objection, there being non-motion approved.
I'd like to pass a resolution declaring operative in its entirety the Sanguniang Kabataan annual budget of Barangay Kaparan, Barangay Tumitong, and Barangay Ipil Heights.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Kapirig, any second?
Honorable Chair.
Seconded by Honorable Chong, any discussion? Amendments, objection, there being non-motion approved.
Last committee report on appropriation, committee report number one four one. Subject barangay supplemental budget number one, 2023 of Barangay Buluan in the amount of seven hundred forty thousand pesos. The committee on appropriation hereby recommends for its approval. I move for the adoption of committee report number one four one.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Kapirig, any second? Seconded by Honorable Boal, any discussion? Amendments, objection, there being non-motion approved.
I move for a resolution declaring operative in its entirety the barangay supplemental budget number one of barangay Buluan.
Second, Honorable Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Kapirig, seconded by Honorable Chong, any discussion? Amendments, objection, there being non-motion approved.
Uh committee report on housing and land utilization. Committee report number one four two. Subject barangay Tiayon request for a resolution giving assurance to the prospective donor of a two thousand square meters lot in Samporna Tiayon, Ipil, Sambuanga, Cibugay owned by Jacqueline Chong Uniforme, that it would be the final site where the Rural Health Unit Substation project from DOH will be constructed. The committee on housing and land utilization has um conducted a committee meeting with the Municipal Planning and Development and Municipal Assessor's Office. After review and deliberation of the above request, the committee finds um that the Sanguniang Bayan is not in authority to pass or make a resolution for this matter. The committee recommends that a conditional deed of donation be made with the condition that this land is for the Rural Health Unit Substation project. I therefore move for the com- for the adoption of committee report number one four two.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Kapirig, any second? Seconded by Honorable Boal, any discussion? Amendments, objection, there being non-motion approved.
Committee report number one four three, subject request for correction of the title forty two six six to city number one three zero dash two zero twenty one zero 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 three seventy nine of the two M development under resolution number zero nine one zero seven series of twenty twenty two dated September twenty one, twenty twenty two for use in the conversion situated in Kaparan, Ipil, Sambuanga, Cibugay of the two M Development Corporation. After review and evaluation, the committee finds that the request of correction is proper and in order. Therefore, the committee recommends for the passing of resolution amending resolution number one, uh number nine dash one zero seven dash twenty twenty two. I move for the adoption of committee report number one four three.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Kapirig, any second? Seconded by Honorable Boal, any discussion? Amendments.
Discussion for consideration. May I ask the Honorable Kapirig if that was the request of that uh Mr. Kamacho uh Chong? Mr. Kamacho Chong, the attorney in fact of the two M construction. Uh inquiry, I just want to inquire if Mr. Kamacho Chong has the authority to transact with the local government unit? If has, if he has the authority to request on that particular matter from the two M construction.
Uh I did not ask about the authority but the the issue itself uh hindi siya masyadong significant because it's because of from the manual to computerized nata. That's why the 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 title or the title of the lot, ato ang ibasihan is sa manual nilang recording. So kagi-convert natakaron sa computerized and centralized. Na so okay na to siya nga number, the same lot nga ano, nagi-ano nila.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair, that is be all.
Any discussion? Amendments, yes, Honorable Ramos.
Balid. Kaya whatever kuwan mga paluap nung sabihan di person may di paluap sudah be special power of turn eh. Ang takdili basta-basta nga maka-paluap siya kaya official muna transaction. Ah there should be supporting documents, the supporting documents supposed to be is the special power of turn eh. Gi-kan satuin. Notarasya to make dinisari paluap.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move for a one minute recess.
Yes, one minute recess.
Number 146.
This is motion passed by Honorable Catalunya, seconded by Honorable Asim. Any discussion? This is for three minutes. I'm back to order. Any discussion? Yes?
The recommendation is to refer to the committee...
Huh? Obiho. Morganano?
Yes. Committee of the Ho. So, I think the Chair will accept the recommendation that will create committee of the Ho.
This is for three minutes again.
Fifteen per route na magdaop. Padulong Poblasyon, Poblasyon, padulong Buluan. Fifteen each sa one route, one. Sa to modern electronic nana?
Um. Um, ma'am, may have the floor now? Please suspend it to accommodate our visitor. Ma'am, maybe explain na lang sa kuwan?
Ah, okay. Vernacular lang sir. Uh, good afternoon once again. Uh, once the uh SB members will pass a resolution for the adoption of the LPTRP, ang LTFRP then can now issue franchise for the four different routes in Ipil. The four routes being identified is from Poblasyon to Tawai, Poblasyon to Tenan. Nasa teka.
Poblasyon magdaop, Poblasyon.
Don Andres magdaop and vice versa, first route, one route. Another route is Ipil Public Market, which is Don Andres to Tawai and vice versa. Ipil Poblasyon Terminal, Buluan and vice versa. Ipil Poblasyon Terminal to Tenan and vice versa. Uh, they can issue franchise uh for each route fifteen units of PUJs. No, pwede sila maka-issue o franchise to accommodate fifteen PUJs per route for the five years. Pwede nga for the first year, upon approval, no, twenty, twenty percent ang ilahang tagaan of franchise, which is equivalent to three. Maunay ilahang maximum, three PUJs kada route. So meaning, muda gan din, gikan sa centro, padulong diri sa Tawai, tulo. And then on the second year, pwede na put another three until ma-konsuming fifteen. And then we'll have again to, we can again update our plan. Kay, kining fifteen was derived from the volume of traffic that we studied uh, mag-two years back. So, uh, that is why they were able to come up with this figure. Kay, katung study that has been made during that time, katung nag-counting ta sa traffic, ang volume sa traffic sa municipality, maunay ang ilahang i-recommend na dapat na to i-accommodate. It is because uh, ang program of the government is uh, the tricycle is no longer allowed to use the highway. No, diba? Dapat wala na'y tricycle sa highway, so maunay ang ilahang uh, program sa LTFRP with the DOTR.
Question ma'am?
Yes ma'am.
What if, aprobaan na'to, no?
Hmm.
No? Then, walay mo apply o franchise, usapan na individualy, association, ang ilang tagan o franchise, anang kuwan?
Kuwan, sila mo hatag o individual franchise.
Association.
Association or cooperative.
Uh, what if, kun wala di mo apply?
So.
Fayboard sa...
I think fayboard sa tricycle, oo.
Oo.
LTFRP, circa jeepness manisha.
Land transportation. Oo, sila. Nusa i-share sa LG ano ma'am?
Wala, diretso man na ang payment sa...
Direct, no?
Sa LTFRP man.
Aprobaan na'to, kay mo siya requirement, no?
Yes ma'am, ah-ah.
Sa SGLG, no? Ah, sa, no, isa sa requirement, nanamay ikuwan ano ma'am? AOM, kabahin ano? Nakadawat mo?
AOM, wala pa ma'am.
Wala pa?
Karong pamanisha na-integrate sa SGLG, go na kuwan, baka next year kung di na'to i-apply.
Atong aprobaan, then, ang mga association diri sa Ipil, maagin ba na diri sa to for accreditation? Kun ay willing, saka dag sa volume ba sa mga tricycles diri sa lungsod sa Ipil. Apil ang mga kolorom de asa daplin. Kapin ba ipo siguro, almost four thousand ang atong mga tricycles diri sa lungsod sa Ipil. Maayaw kay delete the individual ang ilahang issue once, no?
Yes.
Sa franchise by association.
Ma'am, can you speak? Um, apprehension na kuwan, na kuwan ni no? What will happen sa katong gabay o franchise sa Ipil? Kung malisin ang ilang kita, malisin ang ilang, ilang panginabue, di na sila kabay franchise. What will happen to our collection? Di, di, delete na makapikto, makapikto sa atong ginakolekta?
Uh, I think they makaapektuhan sila, but then we have to mag-strategize na putta, maghimutag bagong scheme for the route of tricycle. Murag depende pareho sa, sa Sambangga City nga by district. Maumanay gi-incourage sa tuas sa DALG, in order nga murag ma, until such time nga mawala na ng sa highway. But then, since we have to consider, pod nga, kaayaw sila maapektuhan, so mag-strategize sa'ta together with the traffic office ato ang municipality.
Total, di, delete pa magyuta highly urbanized, no? Delete pa magyuta syudad. As kapo siguro, usan na'to implement na, ato sa i, ikuwan sa i, kasi ni... I-distribute sa natong, ang franchise sa mga motor kung is, establish ba na'to, kung, kung pag-abot ani, kining, kining franchise sa LTFRP, asan apo mabya ang motor. Iplastar sa natong, parapis makita nila, pagnaani, diha sila, diha, di remeh. Kay, kung ato nang kalitan, maka-guliyang maga-motor.
Ah, yes, uh...
Maghulat na pod sila bagong traffic, kuwan, traffic scheme para sa motor.
Traffic problem is a problem, diba national, it is a national problem. Bisag asa ka sa mga cities, kuwan problema gyud ang traffic.
Traffic problem.
Uh, that is why murag nakakamap ang National Government with this program. And for us, since we are already, mura namang putta o medyo na-develop na ang ato ang municipality, I think it's a time for us nga mag-for sita, delete ta kay magtagad pa taon ni ukuwan na, in fact, na nanaganit traffic within the center sa ato ang area. So, from, for this time on, I think pwede na ni na'to i-accommodate. Pero we have to makita taong uh, mga kuwan pod, ganing mga intervention, nga delete pod kaayaw maapektuhan ang motorcycle. That is why we have the Office of the Mitsom, or so, siguro uh, the municipality will have to make plan pod for this, kuwan nga delete gyud ma-dislocate ang livelihoods sa mga motorcycle operators or drivers.
Kali mangon, ato ang municipality ma'am, ang geographic location niya, crossroad ta ba?
Yes ma'am.
Crossroad ta, unlike sa other municipalities, nga pwede na sila agion. Then kita, we are the heart of this Sambangga Peninsula, crossroad ta. Monang, nakasabot ko sa, sa, sa flight pod, sa tuang Chairman sa Committee on Transportation niya. Murag, lisud gyud, lisud gyud siya kuwan nun. Pero anyway, kun, kung kinanglan nun gyud, mapangitaag pa agi, mahimo uma na.
Anyway, uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We, we have heard our uh, MPDO. And this, this matter was referred in your end, so it's up to you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, just give me time, alam.
We are still on the, Mr. Chair may have the floor?
Yes, double tapal ka.
The matter was not yet on the plenary, it's still in the committee level. Uh, we are still on the discussion period on the adoption of the committee report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So, ma'am, thank you. Um, please Honorable Ramos.
Kaling for deliberation second reading, kining ang revise uh, local revenue code. O the municipal BP, sampugay sampugay, amonero isugutan, pasan na'to na second reading. So namay mga kontgodan eh, mga kanang costing dire, siguro. So, basi makapiktar nila sa atong purpose, local revenue code. Uh, kenalan, mukunsayad na nila sa delay mo berlap di ka? Tignan we request the municipal assistant municipal treasurer, pagkoment ba in ano eh. Edaga mga costing reo? Na'wan sa ngatong local revenue code, maaprobaan, muna kene dipan mo aprobaan. So, ngatong local revenue code, motoy, mo berber. Kay kene mano, muramlik mataban, muramlik special legislation man eh. Di ko ka kuwan, nasa pagreconcile na'to, mental na'to, naprobaan na'to. Para ang ibalo ta kesa unu pag, pagreconcile sa kaling local revenue code against aning LPTRP. Kay murag, kuwan ko na eh, once we adopt this, this is this, in national law?
It is a five-year plan sir, yes.
Yeah, kaya'to mo i-adapt?
Ah, yes. Uh, it is the LTFRP who will implement the plan.
Recommendation na siya.
Ah.
Re- recommending for adoption, nga munay mo na'to balao diri.
O local public transportation. Road plan. So delete na in national law. Kung maaprobaan niya, this is a special.
Municipal ordinance.
Municipal ordinance.
Recommended na for adoption, hinga. Kamuna, ang atong ni adab nga sistema sa route ano, kanang route na istitend ya.
Mr. Chair. Yes.
Ang ilang route plan, di flano nila para sa Ipil, mayo para sa Ipil. Ma'am, ang plano ano, plano, ipaadab, kamuna'y mayo para sa Ipil.
Mr. Chair, I'm aware that will uh, invite the Assistant Municipal Treasurer or the Treasurer to make a comment. A comment ane niya, pagkomentaryo na'to sila ane.
Si?
Ano ba? Purpose kuwan? For adoption, kene.
Playa.
Distribution award ma, mahatag na'to, for exemplary excellence, atong serbisyo gatag sa tao. Tanan mo po big, isod po dawat tag award, na tagan na. Na tagan na, tong sa game mo na'to dinasak, isod po, sa klaseng award na, balina.
Something of the design.
Dapat nakatawag ka award, for exemplary services, di hatag din mo sa'yo ng katawan, sakto di tanan. Olay na grabiado. Kaya, malipay sa'yo daw at award, kaya na'tay katawanan mo na grabiado. Una, una.
Mr. Chair, may have the floor?
Yes, Honorable Ramos.
Uh. What would be your take on this, on this matter? Uh, would you la, as Chairman on the, on the Committee on Transportation, would you mind if that will be deferred? Uh, because you will be calling the Tricycle Association on Monday?
Yeah, um, um, mahangi ako na ma-defer, i-defer sa ato ni sa kuwan. Kay, isod kayo, dali, dali un, yun ako ni parakaroon sa pagkakaroon. Kay, kailangan na'to, jud pod ni, pangutan un ato kinsa, di gabuhat aning road plan, pedy no? And of course, mahangi ako taga'y lang kung time, no, kaya astang tagaan nagmapiktuan. Sama ni Cons, pag ingo ni Cons Bab na, kung ako di pa decision nun, delete na ako ibailong medal na para sa panginabuis tao. Kay, astang lisura, no? Batag, taga'y kung time, taga'y kung time lang, taga'y kung time, by this Monday.
Because Mr. Chair, we are all, already in the discussion period for, for the adoption of that committee report.
Because Mr. Chair, we are all, already in the discussion period for, for the adoption of that committee report pertaining to the matter that we are discussing now.
So maybe i-defer na lang na to. Okay.
Kung iwill, will approve this, this time or next week, before June 6.
Defer this matter.
Before June 6, pero our approval is more mag-subject for we'll give extension of time zero to implement this one, okay, ina zero. Pero proban na to, before June 6, kay moma requirement ka, this is requirement para maka, maka award maka ta. Somebody, eh comply. Anyway, tapo dimyo to defer implementation. We'll approve this, subject to, anak.
Subject to what, sir? Subject to?
Subject to, panisteryan pa magani.
Once we will ah, be noted that once we will approve that, that will become a public document. So, earlier, this end has recommended and asked the chairman on, on the Committee on Transportation if what his ah action on this or proceed or defer.
Um, Mr. Chair may I?
Noble katalon ya, very good, nice.
Ah, having heard all the discussions, I move to defer ah the, um the approval of this, ah, for the adoption of this ah committee report pending ah further discussion and inquiries.
Just a motion pass by the noble katalon ya, any second? Seconded by Honorable Hasim, any discussion? Amendments? Objection?
The question is ah, to defer discussion, this ah, this year, up to when?
Up to Monday lagi.
Ah, Monday, Monday.
Okay, up to Wednesday.
Should be, the, our decision, seconded ah after June 6, kay moma like deadline come to Monday.
Okay. Any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved. Next, committee report, Mr. Chair.
Committee report of Honorable Mark Chong.
Okay. I have here my, one committee report, report number 139. From the Committee on Peace and Order, L D R R M. Subject is Disaster Risk Reduction Management for Health, B R R M C Plan for calendar year 2023 to 2025. Remarks and recommendations. The committee to what was, to which was referred the above mentioned subject after review. The committee finds disaster, the disaster risk reduction management for health and calendar year 2023 to 2025 proper and in order because it is beneficial to the Piliño since the main goal of this said plan is, is to guarantee uninterrupted health services delivery during emergencies and disaster whenever it occurs in this municipality. Therefore, the committee recommends for its approval. The committee recommends for its approval. I move for adoption of this committee report, Honorable Chair.
Just a motion pass by Honorable Chong, any second? Seconded by Honorable Ramos, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved.
Honorable Chair, I move to pass a resolution approving this disaster risk reduction management for health, D R R, D R R M C Plan for calendar year 2023 to 2025. I so move, Honorable Chair.
Just a motion pass by Honorable Chong, any second? Seconded by Honorable Masin, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved.
Still committee report.
I am.
Honorable Turalba.
Committee Report Number 14, 147. On the Committee on Rules, Ordinances and Resolutions. The subject is the proposed municipal ordinance to regulate the sale, dispense, resale of pharmaceutical drug products in sari-sari stores and other retail outlets in municipality of Epeel, Zambuanga Cibugay. The remarks and recommendations the Committee on Rules, Ordinances and Resolutions to which the above, above legislative matter was referred and upon review, the committee finds some inquiry, possible proposals and for the purpose to enforce effectively this proposed ordinance hereby recommends to consider to incorporate herein the following to it. There shall be a composition of task force for the implementation of this proposed ordinance thus to administer and supervise the implementation, to analyze and inspect establishments engaged in the dispensing of the pharmaceutical drugs and assess thereat. The purpose of which is, when there are liable, who shall then conduct the hearings and investigations relative to matters that is set in this proposed ordinance necessary for the protection of public health. Municipal Health Board should play vital role in the implementation of this proposed ordinance of which is not incorporated in the formulation. The purpose of which is to preserve its identity, strength and purity upon the basis of information submitted as part of the investigation or any other information or is represented. For the purpose of enforcement of this ordinance shall include task force that is duly and officially designated by mun, by the Municipal Health Board upon representing appropriate credentials to the owner, operator to enter for inspection at reasonable hours and reasonable manners to any establishments on which pharm- pharmaceutical drugs is being suspiciously dispensed. If the authorized designated task force making an inspection of the establishments has obtained any samples, items relative to pharmaceutical drugs in the course of the inspection and prior to leaving the premises, he shall then give to the owner, operator a receipt describing the samples, items obtained and be recorded and kept in the custody of the municipal health officer for future references on investigation. It shall be the duty of the Municipal Health Board conformably to hold hearings and conduct investigations relative to matters adopting and touching the provisions of this proposed ordinance. Said Municipal Health Board shall also perform additional functions properly within the scope of this ordinance hereof with additional pergium to be collected, optional if the M H B warrants, Municipal Health Board warrants. And the decision of the board shall be advisory to the task force. In the course of the investigation that may arise in the Office of the Municipal Licensing shall the Office of the Municipal Licensing shall took part and shall be considered as technical member for their depreparation held and releases of municipal business, businesses permits emanates. When a violation of any provision of this ordinance come to the knowledge of the task force of such character that the penalty ought to be instituted against the offender. He shall certify the facts to the chairman of the board and other documentary evidence on which the charge is based. In the default of such payment of violation and our community service as provided in section four of this proposed ordinance, the board shall constitute and formulate internal policy or may incorporate therein so that the officially authorized designated task force is equipped with knowledge on rules and policies on what is being set forth against operator owner and it shall not exempt it from any of the provision of this ordinance. And it shall be strictly specified that the collection of fees and issuance of official receipts to offenders shall be made in the Office of the Municipal Treasurer and all income derived from fees authorized in this ordinance shall accrue to the general fund. In section four, penalty of this proposed ordinance, the committee is recommending to include that forging, tampering, altering and reproducing in any form of any pertinent documents that are necessary requirements to authorize the dispensing of pharmaceutical drugs in any retail sari-sari store for his own advantage or any misrepresentation is hereby discouraged and an amount corresponding to this violation should appear in this proposed ordinance. The author should set a standard on the formulation of this ordinance for the committee find the provisions inconsistent with the title to regulate, simplify as control or maintain, where in section two, general guidelines of this proposed ordinance, it prohibits the nature and kind. The committee therefore recommend to remain back to the author of this proposed municipal ordinance to properly formulate this ah, this proposed, proposed ordinance and for inclusion of the proposed recommendations thereat of the Committee on Rules, Ordinances and Resolutions. I move for the, for the adoption of the committee report number 147, Mr. Chair on the Committee on Rules, Ordinances and Resolutions.
Um, there's a motion pass by Honorable Turalba, seconded by Honorable Chong, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved.
Second Committee Report, Mr. Chair, still on the Committee on Rules, Ordinances and Resolutions. Subject and ordinance establishing a livestock auction center as L G U's marketing support and stabilize the supply of livestock for slaughter in Epeel, Zambuanga Cibugay. The Committee on Rules, Ordinances and Resolutions to which the above subject matter was referred and upon thorough review, the committee was, is recommending to remain back the said proposed ordinance to the author for the reason that there was no approved memorandum of agreement between the local government unit and Barangay Panghi Council to effect the said proposed ordinance. I move for adoption of this committee report number 148 on the Committee on Rules, Ordinances and Resolutions, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion pass by Honorable Turalba, seconded by Honorable Ball, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved.
That will be all, Mr. Chair, thank you.
For next committee report.
Honorable Ramos, committee report. Honorable Ball, committee report. Committee report. Okay, we are through with the committee report, Honorable Chair.
I think we're through to the committee report, um, for calendar of business, Madam Sekretary.
Okay, for business for second reading, we have one item B does one an ordinance revising the local revenue code of municipality of Epeel.
This matter will be referred to the Committee on Rules for the public hearing and may we hear from the sponsor of this Honorable Namis for his sponsors, sponsorship speech on the proposed ordinance before the interpretation.
Ah, Mr. Chair. Oh, we have agreed in principle in previous regular session that we'll first discuss this on the second reading. Then when we ready to with our discussion on a period of amendment, that will be the time, we'll, we'll calendar this for public hearing. Momentoy, ah, agreement na to, so this time I am prepared to to sponsor this ah ordinance. So momentoy atong discussion nga hindi, hindi period lupa amendment, dito na to ipasulod public hearing, kaya ako ang atong, ang ako ang atong ah idea is to recommend for public hearing after I rendered my committee report na di las, ah, previous regular session. Pero, pero okay ramo pod, kung i-recommend na to ni for public hearing, ah, next week may di reypon, there is no, there is no harm because I refer this to ah ex, pucial balero periyon, sa what may problema na, prepo ide mananasa. First reading, i-recommend na to for public hearing or second reading during period of amendment delete ta mo is got, mo entertain, ini amendment, na talis nga, di na na sama public hearing. So one na karoon, I, I am, I am ready to sponsor this ah, base will be the legislation. This time, kaya ako nagto magyukung ah, we cannot tackle this in one session kung delay, in, siguro in several sessions, pa siguro kay, to god sa kadagan, itikap this composed of 117 pages. So isa po di ba di, if di ba di will, will agree.
So sir, um, ganun sa ba kamag, um, Honorable Ramos, ganun sa ba kamagkanta ko, public hearing? Um, okay, so, Honorable Turalba, um, may I ask, ah Honorable Turalba, um, may I sa, ah, mo ang gi refer ang kuwan?
Public hearing?
Public hearing, so when, schedule? So maybe, this is for, this is for two minutes. So maybe this is for this is for two minutes. Um, per other matters, Mr. Flah. Can anyone suspend the rules till? Yes? Okay, um. Any other matters?
Other ma- for consideration.
So ako lang ani sa sizes lang sa t-shirt sa kuwan sa katong t-shirt para sa next session ato sa kuwan. Iyo, kiss lang ko pakuha lang sa mga sizes atong. Have more other matters?
Anymore. Sir, ikaw napaka other matters, concern?
Awesome. Si Mamyaw in conference, invite next session. Si Mamyaw, i-invite next session.
Si Mamyaw, guapo kay pari pari underi.
Okay.
Hmm. Okay ka, si Mamyaw?
Okay. Please note it Madam Secretary.
Parabuhat.
Wala mangka, karamtayuan.
Kasi mo ito ko toro.
Pasok.
Kanang lang chan nga naaka.
Oo.
Okay.
Kanang naalang. Kanang kanang naalang. Cano sa mangkanapi, csa csa di ba? Pasahi, kasi susunod session. Sunod session.
So no other, no more other matters?
Inviting. Uh, press all those body on the.
Ang ang very effective yet ano is sa move on say IP. Ako na, ay mo, Mr. Chair. Invite the regional director of the NCIP uh on matters relative to the uh IPMR of this municipality.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Turalba. Any second?
On uh barangay and municipal IPMR.
Okay. There's a motion passed by Honorable Turalba. Any second?
On June seven.
Okay.
On June seven, twenty twenty three.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Turalba. Any second? Seconded by Honorable Kapirik. Any discussion? Amendments? Objection? Tribunal motion approved. No more other matters?
I second to the motion of the Honorable Bob Chong.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Chong seconded by Honorable Turalba. Um. The forty-six regulation session is hereby adjourned.
Thank you. Good afternoon.